Welcome, everyone. I call to order the October 24, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Smith, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki, County Council Jane Vedo, Roll Call Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you when to do that, when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite comments. Gary, what's up first?
Thank you Chair. First is a public hearing, Item 1, First Reading of Ordinance Number 04-Tash-Dash-2024, an Ordinance Amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 10.01, Ambulance Service Plan. To present is Rod Cook, Director of Health Housing and Human Services, and Bill Conway, who's Public Health Emergency Services Manager and Health Housing and Human Services. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Organ revised statute requires each county to establish a plan for the county for efficient and effective ambulance services. This is referred to as the Ambulance Service Plan, or ASP. The proposed ambulance service plan update has been approved by the Oregon Health Authority. Clackamas County Code, Chapter 10.01, Ambulance Service, is the codified form of the county's ambulance service plan. This is the first of two required public hearings regarding the updates to the ambulance service plan. Highlights of the ambulance service plan updates have been provided to the Board of County Commissioners, and a redlined ambulance service plan version is available to the public by email request to bcc@clackamas.us. And with me today, I have our Public Health Emergency Services Manager to answer any detailed questions you might have, or give you a little bit of history on how we came to this process.
Good morning Commissioners. Glad to be here. A few reminders.
Introduce yourself, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Conway, Office of Public Health Emergency Services Manager and Health Housing and Human Services. Just a few reminders that our ambulance service plan hadn't been updated since 2012. This was a two-year process that included a robust review with our consultant, Cambridge Consulting Group, that included recommendations from that consultant. We included multiple stakeholders, as the Board made it crystal clear that you wanted stakeholder involvement, so we included stakeholders, including but not limited to our fire agencies, American Medical Response, the EMS Council, both of our 911 centers, CCOM and LOCOM, our EMS medical directors, our hospital systems, and our associated labor groups representing our field personnel. And again, this has been approved by the Oregon Health Authority, just as a reminder, and we are here to answer any questions or clarify anything that needs to be clarified. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do the Commissioners have any qualifying questions or comments at this point? We do have, I'll allow, an opportunity after I open the public hearing. Regarding the Cambridge Plan that was submitted, not all recommendations were adopted in that. We went through that, and with everybody's input, decided what would be the best for Clackamas County regarding that. Thank you very much. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. Gentlemen, you may step down for now.
Thank you so much.
I have a series of cards, people who testify on the ambulance plan only. Okay? It's just for the ambulance plan. Okay. First up is Mark Kilman Burnham. Please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Sorry for the long name. My name is Mark Kilman Burnham, and I am from Global Medical Response and American Medical Response, the local ambulance provider. I just want to say good morning, and good morning Chair Smith and esteemed Commissioners. We're very thankful to be here, testify. I just want to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude for your unwavering commitment to making sure this ambulance service plan has moved forward and has enhanced. Enhancing emergency services in Clackamas County is extremely important, and your proactive leadership, particularly under Chair Smith, has been instrumental. We also like to thank Mr. Cook and Mr. Conway. Mr. Conway is a great guy. I don't care what people say about him. So Chair Smith, your responses to our concerns in our staff and the local fire departments about how to move this forward is amazing. The dedication is truly commendable, especially during those post-pandemic times, when we've seen all across the nation where we've been at staffing levels that you just can't believe. Because Commissioner West can tell you, the health service divisions of hospitals, ambulance companies, people are backing out of it, because there's just, you know, people are not coming up. And the way you've addressed that concern in this area by helping us with getting students into school has been amazing. So we just feel that we wanted to step forward and thank you for that. The other thing that's amazing is that we've been able to do things such initiatives of nurse navigation in the area, which has seen a tremendous success. In fact, I was in my local Safeway store, I was telling Commissioner West, and I had a person come up to me and start explaining to me how she used nurse navigation, and it's one of our products. I have no idea even what she was talking about, but she was happy, so I was excited for her. So, you know, this takes phenomenal leadership and support and teamwork, and that's what we've tried to do with our fire departments, with the Commission, and with everyone involved. Because if you don't have a team going into this, you're not going to be successful. So we're excited about that. We just want to be here and help and answer any questions you might have as we're here. Jason is with me, who can answer technical questions along the way. We also have Paul Priest in the back, who's one of our Associate Vice Presidents, who can answer questions. But, you know, we've been around for a while. We've been, just to reflect a moment on our history, AMR started in this area when our predecessor companies were Buck Ambulance and Willamette Falls 111 years ago. And we've been here, and we've been serving here, and we love this community. And we just want to make sure that that type of service that we've done before leads into the future. So again, we're just excited to be here and be able to participate and coordinate with our fire departments. So thank you once again for your dedication and leadership, and together I think we can make a difference and move this thing forward, and have a great ASA and ambulance service plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. We have seven cards from the ASA folks who want to testify, Commissioners. Up next, Jason, please introduce yourself.
Jason Mayo, AMR Operations Manager in Clackamas County, and I just came up with Mark, in case anybody had any questions I could answer.
Technical questions. Anybody have technical questions? This is just the plan part, okay? I guess you're done. You got off easy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next is Matt Dale. Matt Dale, and it looks like Malala Fire Chief Stafford is with him. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning Chair and Commissioners. My name is Matt Dale. I'm the Deputy Chief of Canby Fire District, and with me is Fire Chief Vince Stafford from Malala Fire District. Together, we represent the other two ambulance service providers in the county beyond AMR, and for Canby and Malala, respectively. I think Malala Fires provided ambulance service just a few more years than Canby. We started in Canby in 1949, so we're coming up on our 76th year, and I believe Malala might be closer to 80.
Eighty, close to eighty, yeah.
We are here to offer our support in passing and adopting the ambulance service plan that is before you. We were both involved in the work heavily to come to fruition what we have. We believe this plan replaces an outdated plan. It will allow us to move forward in a county that has largely been rural, and the influx of population has made this very challenging for all of our ambulance providers to continue to provide service in this growing metropolitan population that we're in now. So we offer our support in passing that.
Chief Stafford, go ahead.
Yeah. Again, just the support for the plan. It was a lot of work over the last couple of years, people, tremendous amount of cooperation to put this together, and coming up with, as the area has grown so much, how do we try and stay ahead of that plan and do these things? There's a lot of innovative things in this plan that we have never had in the past. They mentioned nurse navigation is just one of those. So I think it's a great thing moving forward, and it allows us to adapt and move forward with those type of things. So we look forward to it. Like we talked about, we have a long history here, obviously, in the county. We just celebrated our 100th year anniversary from Malala Fire, and we believe in the ambulance service plan for the whole county. It's a large geographical area to try and cover, and I think this will move us forward, move us in the right direction, so.
Thank you for your support on that, on this. It's appreciated.
Good morning Board. Chief Smith, thank you very much, or Chair Smith, thank you very much. I'm not as good as-
I'll take chief, no.
Chief, you can be a chief. I'm not as good as off the cuff of these guys, so I'll have a nice little prepared statement I'm going to read.
That's okay.
My name is Ben Sorenson. I'm the Medical Services Chief for Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue. As you may know, Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue covers the western areas of Clackamas County, to include the cities of Wilsonville, Westland, and other unincorporated areas of the county. We have eight fire stations in Clackamas County, providing 24-hour-a-day all-hazard first response with advanced life support paramedics and EMTs on all of our apparatus. I personally have been involved in EMS in Clackamas County for the last 13 years, first as the Operations Manager for American Medical Response, and now in my current role at Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue. I've spent those 13 years working to ensure that Clackamas County citizens and visitors receive the best medical care possible when needed. I come to you today in support of the proposed ambulance service plan. This plan is a result of a long, two-year process, a process in which the collaboration between the EMS agencies was unmatched by anything I've been involved with in my 30-year EMS career. An uncountable number of hours were spent with the fire and EMS partners, medical directors, and county staff to create a plan that not only works for today, but has the vision to work for years to come. EMS systems across the country are struggling, and we cannot sustain the current service delivery models we deploy today. We must start to think outside of the box to provide not only appropriate care, but the methods in which we deliver that care. I believe this ambulance service plan is the door that opens those opportunities. The addition of clinical performance standards and clinical innovation language in the plan sends us in the right direction. Response times used to be the sole standard in which we measured EMS success, but if clinicians are providing poor care, why does it matter how fast we got there? Including clinical standards in the plan supports all clinicians to provide the best possible care to those in need, and balancing that with the appropriate resource arriving in a safe and efficient time will ensure that the highest quality of care is being delivered. Innovation is key to a healthy community. Hospitals are overwhelmed with patients, many of whom EMS delivers to them at times unnecessarily. A broken U.S. healthcare system has meant people now rely on EMS as their primary form of healthcare. This increase in demand on our clinicians is not sustainable. This plan provides avenues to reduce that call volume and get people the right care that they deserve, which is not always a visit to a hospital. Nurse navigation and community paramedics are the key to alternate deliveries of care and reducing the strain on an already overworked EMS system. The addition of BLS-capable transport will allow more ALS ambulances to be available to respond to the calls in which true emergencies exist. I believe the innovation in this plan and the intent it provides will move Clackamas County into the future, and will be a plan that other counties across the state will look to when they write their own plans. Thank you for having me, and I hope that you support and approve this plan.
Thank you for your support of the plan.
Yes, thank you.
Up next, Rick Hoffman. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Rick Hoffman from Clackamas Fire. I'm the Medical Services Chief there. I also, Ben, would like to just read a written statement, otherwise I might wander. I'm here to speak in support of the new Clackamas County Ambulance Service Plan. Clackamas Fire is a vital part of the emergency medical system in Clackamas County. Responding to 911, excuse me, responding to 911 calls in our service area of over 300 square miles from 21 staff fire stations, we see firsthand the need for a robust and reliable ambulance transport system, a system that supports getting those with life-threatening injuries and illness to the hospital as fast as possible. Ambulance transport is vital for overall public safety. Clackamas Fire, our neighboring fire and rescue partners, and police and sheriff departments respond to tens of thousands of 911 calls annually, and many of those calls need an Delayed ambulances not only impact a patient requiring definitive medical care, but waiting for an ambulance can increase the amount of time emergency response forces are unavailable or delayed to respond to the next emergency. This ambulance service plan can help maintain ambulance coverage and impact response times to all first responders in the county, specifically by adding basic life support transport unit capability, adding clinical innovation language that includes but not limited to nurse triage such as nurse navigation, and adding language encouraging reduction of dispatching first responder to low-却医 health calls. Clackamas Fire has been part of this planning process, along with our partner agencies, and supports the approval of this ambulance service plan. And I also speak for the Fire Chief Nick Brown. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward and offering your support. Anybody else in the room who would like to testify on the ambulance plan only? Come on forward, sir. I don't have a card for you, but you can introduce yourself.
My name is Don Johnson. I'm the Fire Chief in the city of Lake Oswego, and I'm here in support of the ambulance service plan as written. This was a long road getting here for the fire service partners, for the public health professionals here in Clackamas County, and for the ambulance service provider itself. We came together as a team that you've heard about in other conversations. Three areas in particular that I wanted to highlight is health equity is really important in any ambulance service plan, and this plan supports that fully with response time guarantees and health equity issues. The second piece, you've heard it before, the clinical innovation. This is a third system that I've worked in, third county system, and this is by far better than any system that I've ever worked in, and part of it is the focus on clinical innovation. You don't get better care than you get here in Clackamas County. And the third piece is the quality improvement. We spend a lot of time individually as departments, together collectively as EMS professionals, looking at the quality improvement data to make sure we're providing the best patient care that will result in the best patient outcomes. So all three of those pillars are part of this plan, and I encourage you to adopt the plan as written. Thanks.
Thank you, Don, for your support. Those are all of my blue cards for in-person testimony. Andrew, do we have anyone online who would like to testify on the ambulance plan?
Madam Chair, I have received no advance registrations for anyone who'd like to testify online about the ambulance service plan ordinance. However, if you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak on the first reading of this ordinance related to the ambulance service plan, I'll now ask you to raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing on this issue and ask Commissioners if you have any questions or comments. I just want to say one thing. We talk about response times and how fast we can get out and help people, but it's just not about response times. It's about the very excellent care that you would receive once the ambulance arrive. It wasn't that long ago, out on the farm, my dad had an episode where we had to call the ambulance. I'm going to tell you, I had two of them there like that, and we were clear out in South County. And I was very impressed by their diagnosis. I was very impressed by where they took them. The first choice was full, the hospital couldn't handle it, so I said, "Just head up the freeway." "Oh, we can go here." And it was excellent. It was excellent. And the diagnosis of, once you get there, to help the person while they get to the hospital is just very good. We have several Commissioners. Ooh. Commissioner Savas, I think you're first.
Actually, I think it was Commissioner Scholl was first.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all of our fire professionals in the county, our EMS professionals and our county staff, for exceptionally good work in arriving at this plan. I know it's going to be in the best interest of the overall health of the people of this county. Thank you again for your work.
Who's next? Commissioner Savas.
Yep. Well, thank you. I've been here a number of years, and I can remember back from the beginning of my tenure in 2011 that our providers that spoke here today were heavily involved in working on a plan and renovating, reworking this, and knowing it was, you know, something that was going to be coming up before us. And so I appreciate the countless thousands of hours you all put in collectively on this project. It's a long time coming. And I know there's a lot of issues, and we're here today specifically for adopting this ambulance plan. So I'll keep my comments and my concerns, you know, somewhat limited here today. But I do want to speak to response times. I don't want to diminish that. I appreciate all the new innovation and the nurse navigation and things to make sure that those that need to respond are there to respond for those emergencies. And just two personal stories that are somewhat related to one another, but I lost a friend of mine who had a heart attack on a golf course, and he, had he gone there, as his family was sharing, had he got to the hospital, maybe 30 seconds to a minute sooner, he would have made it. But unfortunately, and that was a long time ago, so this is no reflection on any provider in this room. And then here, about six or seven years ago, one of the former mayors, who's a friend of mine, of one of the cities in Clackamas County, had a heart attack at Stone Creek Golf Course, and he shared his personal story, and had he not made it to the hospital within, you know, had it been even a minute longer, he probably wouldn't have made it. And he remembers all the things that the ambulance providers, paramedics were doing in the ambulance on the way to keep him alive. So it was a very touching story, and as a consequence or a result of that story, he said, "You know what? That road coming out of Stone Creek Golf Course is circuitous, it takes too much time, we have to go slow, it's bumpy, you know, we need to do something." So we actually put in an emergency exit off of Highway 213 into Stone Creek Golf Course just to address that issue, so that in an emergency, there's a faster route in and out of that. So again, I just tell that story because response times are, and I'm sure Commissioner West has experienced that in ER, and I have family that is also in the same line of work, working in ER and also working ICU, so I understand time is sometimes of the essence. But I just want to say thank you to all the providers and, again, all your work on this effort, and it's been a long time coming. And the other challenge we have is traffic and congestion, and I know that impedes your efforts to respond to emergencies, and believe me, that's top of mind every time I get in these transportation meetings. And I would love to see your faces and your voices more prominent in some of those conversations, so I'll be reaching out to you in weeks and months ahead as we talk about a transportation package going forward. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner West, you're up.
This is really great. It isn't like this in every single county in Oregon, but we really value the relationship that we have with AMR, and the tough conversations, because we have relationships we're able to work through. And not all the metrics were met, and we had to figure out a way to be creative to make those outcomes more desirable and to meet the goals of the previous contract. And we got super creative when we sharpened our pencils, and Mark, we had meetings, and Chair Smith worked really hard on this over a long period of time. And where other counties seem to spin their wheels, we're not able to actually do good local government. We've come to, I think, a really good plan here. The government closest to you impacts your life the most. When you call 911, it is a central function of a good functioning policy in government that the ambulances can show up, the fire department can show up, in a reasonable amount of time to provide you the services you need in crisis. And that's becoming harder and harder to do. I don't know if Philip is in, is Philip, are you in the room? Is Philip Mason Joyner here? No? I just want to give him a quick shout out. He is one of our, he's our Public Health Director, and early on, trying to figure out how to deal with 911 calls and getting people the care they need, making sure we're triaging appropriately, we're not sending out ambulances on low-却医 or chronic issues, but we started to bring in nurses, and so most of you in this room know that I'm an RN, and we started to, the nurse navigation program, and that program is, there's nothing else like it in Oregon. And we started to triage people and get them the kind of care they need and the follow-up wraparound services they need, and when they didn't need an ambulance. We also have community paramedics, which are an essential part of what we do, that allow paramedics to follow a high-risk population, to show up at their home, to check on them, to make sure they're getting their doctor's appointments, to make sure that they're getting their basic medical needs met, to make sure that any questions they have are being answered. If they're having a bad day, there's somebody there to take care of them and help them and their family, and to keep them from just using 911 as a resource for medical care. And just these different innovations and investing the right way, and having the relationship necessary with our ambulance providers to have these tough conversations and make big pivots shows real leadership, and so I think we're doing good government here. I think a lot of this is, it can be modeled. You just heard Mark talk about Henderson, Nevada, has now saw our nurse navigation, it's like, well, what is that all about? And so people want to replicate and implement good leadership and good ideas, and so we're doing a lot of that here in Clackamas County. I'm very excited about nurse navigation. I think it's cutting-edge, and more and more large counties should be implementing it. And I think nurses would be a great asset in these type of situations. So I'm ecstatic. I think this is great. And Mark, thank you for your presentation, and all of AMR and Chiefs, thank you for coming today and presenting. We really appreciate it, and thank you for partnering with us.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
So when I first started working on ambulance issues, it was back in 2003, Mark. I knew you then. And it's come a long way in terms of the cooperation and support between the ambulance service and our firefighters that are coordinating out there to make sure people get the best care. At that time, it's a pretty bumpy ride. I'm so happy to see today that everybody is working in cooperation in a way that is prioritizing the safety and the access to quick medical care that our constituents deserve. I think that coming together as a group really made a difference in terms of cooperative conversations. And by recent experiences, we've had a child who was riding a, two kids on one of those motorized bikes, took a turn too fast to the bottom of my street. One child flew off and actually ended up with a reasonably serious head injury. And between AMR and the firefighters in Lake Oswego, it was pretty immediate care in getting that child out to a hospital system where she could be treated. It was a pretty scary experience in what is normally a very quiet neighborhood. And I do think that nurse navigation system is a major innovation that I hope will catch on nationally, because it makes a lot of sense. It's triage, so the pieces, people that don't need it immediate, you know, can work it through with medical conversations prior to sending out the other resources. It saves a lot of time and frees up the system to really address those serious accidents and serious issues that have to immediately get people to the emergency room.
So, long time coming. Yes, it is. It's been a long time coming and a lot of work. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, just one thing I forgot to mention. I'm just doing this because of the size of the audience here, who's not all here for this in particular one, but I know our emergency responders know this, but one thing that has really changed in their world, our world, is that firefighters, paramedics are now responding to more incidents with drug overdoses and the homeless population that is struggling on the street, and they're overwhelmed. If you look at their calls from where they, what they do today, to what they did 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, it's a whole new world, and that's stressing every part of the system that there is out there. So again, my kudos to all of you who are in that world and kind of cope with this. This is really putting a lot of stress on our tax dollars, but you're all doing great, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners, for that. Additionally, Clackamas County geographically is a very large county with 1.2 million acres about and 16 cities. So we serve a huge population, and sometimes when you're that large, but only the third largest county by population. Innovation is key for a county like us. I think, I was going to say something else, I don't remember. Oh, well. Any other comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion, and it's written for you, Commissioners.
Yeah, I move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved, we read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you all for coming to testify and supporting this good work. A clerk, please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
The ordinance will be numbered 04, 2024, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 10.01, ambulance service plan.
Any further discussion? And do Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none, the second reading will be Thursday, November 14, 2024, at the Board's regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thank you all. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the consent agenda. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Two, B, Health Housing and Human Services. One, approval of a grant application to the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for restorative justice diversion programs. Anticipated grant value is $500,000 for six months. Funding is through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order with Robert Half International Incorporated for temporary staffing services. Purchase order value is $301,365 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Three, approval of an amendment to the revenue intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to fund public health services. Amendment value is $335,669.49 for 11 months. Total agreement value is increased to $12,433,475.76 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of a revenue grant agreement with Health Chair of Oregon for a community capacity building grant. Total grant value is $1,334,306 for three years. Funding is through the U.S. Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. No county general funds are involved. Five, approval of an amendment to a personal services contract with Clackamas Women's Services for Homeless Services. Amendment value is $6,874,290.21 for nine months. Total agreement value is increased to $16,056,849.63 for three years. Funding is through supportive housing services funds, Oregon Housing and Community Services Funds, and $88,836.47 of budgeted county general funds. C, Transportation and Development. One, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for a boating facilities grant at Boones Ferry Marina. Total grant value is $30,000. Required 25% match is through $6,835.84 of county parks funds and $3,335.26 of in-kind staff time. No county general funds are involved. Two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for a waste reduction and recycling grant. Total grant value is $792,880 for one year. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernment, three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Estacada to transfer a portion of South River Mill Road. Total agreement value is $19,260. Funding is through the Community Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Four, approval of supplemental project authorization with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the South Holly Lane Abernathy Creek Bridge. Total agreement value is $9,397,500. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation, local bridge program, and county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Five, approval of a supplemental project authorization with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Southeast Sunnyside Road Project. Total agreement value is $2,010,000. Funding is through the Federal Highway Administration, the Oregon Department of Transportation, and county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Six, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order with custom truck and equipment for a bucket truck. Total purchase order value is $172,980. Funding is through the county road fund. No county general funds are involved. Seven, approval of a contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the Wildcat Mountain Drive Paving Project. Total contract value is $1,284,180. Funding is through county-approved American Rescue Plan Act funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes my consent agenda.
Thank you, Andrew. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off this consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Savas has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the poll?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water and Environment Services Board of Directors.
This is the consent agenda for Water and Environment Services. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Three, A, approval of a resolution of necessity and purpose authorizing the acquisition of fee property by good faith negotiations, if possible, or condemnation, if necessary, for Upper Kella Creek Surface Water Capital Improvement Projects. Funding is through Water and Environment Services Surface Water Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes my consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to pull any items from this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's a wrong motion, please.
I move for approval of the Water and Environment Services Consent Agenda.
It's alrighty.
I'll second that.
All right. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Water and Environment Services Consent Agenda. Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the poll?
Director Savas.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water and Environment Services Board of Directors and convene as a Development Agency Board of Directors.
Now you're meeting as a development agency. This is the consent agenda for the development agency. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item A, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Milwaukee relating to the Southeast Stanley Avenue improvements. Total agreement value is $6,986,000. Funding is through partial reimbursement from the City of Milwaukee and $3,959,000 of budgeted development agency funds. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes my consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any director wish to remove any item off of this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Director West has moved, we approve the consent agenda for the Development Agency, and Director Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the poll?
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director Savas.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. And we ha, here we are at public communication, which most of you have come here for. I'm going to pause just for two minutes and go down and see how many cards we have, but don't go anywhere, okay?
Chair, would you please convene as the Board of County Commissioners?
I will adjourn as the Development Agency Board of Directors and convene, reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
No bad idea, because they have, they have.
Oh, not too bad. Busy, got a busy, busy.
Go ahead, go ahead, pass that out. Okay, thank you all for coming today. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as a BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregonary by statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and will take in-person testimony first. I have several cards here. I understand you want to testify in order. In interest of time, I'm going to have you come up in twos, if you don't mind. Each person will have three minutes. Come forward, state your name, your area of residence. Up first is Kit Sarum and Dwight Sims.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you. I'm Kit Stavram. I live in Clackamas County. I've been here 20 years. I'm a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans. I'm not a spokesman. The United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by our highly-qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear: they don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had $10,000 fewer dollars in your bank account than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had that significant discrepancy in its books, the company would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election using only official data provided by Oregon state election officials shows that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying one candidate won or another, one over another, or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes, as counted, were not all valid and accurate under the law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dwight, you're up.
Yeah, thanks, Chair Smith. My name is Dwight Sims. I've lived here in Clackamas County for the last nine years, in the Wilsonville area. I've been a resident of the state basically since I was born. I am a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans, just like Kit, but I'm not a spokesperson for that organization. The United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. This morning, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with the summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We are happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have questions that I cannot answer now, I will commit to getting you the answer in writing from the United Sovereign Americans executive team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation have been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that we, the people of Oregon, make it clear to our representatives that these issues must be taken seriously. Today, we come to you, fellow citizens of Oregon, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication to and support of the concerns of your fellow citizens of Oregon and citizens across our nation. Thank you. The following speakers will read the resolution in several parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Up next in twos, Karen Cook and, is it Dorothy Von Eggers? Eggers, come on up. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Karen Cook. I live in Clackamas County, and I have been a resident of Oregon for the majority of my 61 years. I am a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. This is the resolution for a legally valid 2024 election. Whereas it is a, whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have a free and fair elections, and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote, just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise, per Reynolds versus Sims, 377 U.S. 533 in 1964. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation, Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law, per in Recoy, 127 U.S. 731 in 1888. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, per National Voter Registration Act of 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. And four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, per the Help America Vote Act of 2002.
Good morning. My name is Dorothy Von Eggers, and I live in Clackamas County, and I have been a resident of the state of Oregon for 49 years. I am also a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. Whereas an open-source audit of the Oregon 2022 general election conducted by Oregon state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 97,552 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Oregon state voter roll database, 71,589 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 20,104 more votes counted than voters who voted in the '22 general election. No one knows who cast them. 71,573 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Oregon was 16. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Up next, in order, is Rita Lynn and Nora Tim. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes. Rita, go ahead. You're number five.
I'm number five.
Okay.
My name is Rita Lynn. I live in the city of Milwaukee in Clackamas County, and I've been a resident of Oregon since I was born here. I'm also a volunteer and not an official spokesman with the United Sovereign Americans. What you heard today is the culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly-qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams from Oregon and across the country. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Law- Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in Oregon, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this was not the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or responsive. Oh, I'm sorry. This was the one they gave me originally. I apologize.
Page B4.
Page B4.
Go ahead and finish.
Now that I'm on the right page.
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
Whereas these readings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud ab initio, United States versus Throckmorton, 98 U.S. 61, from 1878. From time immemorial, an election to public office has been, in point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates, United States versus Classic, 313 U.S. 299, from 1941. Whereas Oregon's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and proverbially chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Am I done?
Thank you. Up next, Nora Tim.
I'm Nora Tim. I live in Oregon City and have been a resident of the state of Oregon all my life. I'm a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. Continuing. Therefore, we call on our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility to register and vote, not a nonanimous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secure ballot similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding the risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate, trained citizens, and witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates trained and entrained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and CVRs. Six, ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, in order, is Shelley Tim and Dawn Powers. Shelley, you're up first. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Shelley Tim. I live in Clackamas County in Milwaukee and have been a resident of the state of Oregon for all of my 64 years. I am a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans and not a spokesperson. Continuing. An NIST-compliant, randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. If the total of all unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. We are requesting that the Clackamas County Commissioners strongly consider signing the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Commissioners of Clackamas County, Oregon, stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore Clackamas County officials, Oregon legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both state and county boards of elections to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Dawn Powers, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dawn Powers. I live in Clackamas County. I've been a resident of Oregon for about 30 years now. I am also a volunteer and not an official spokesperson with the United Sovereign Americans. You just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election, from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, a system which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing to not fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children and the young? How much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting each other? The cost is immeasurable, so I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website, showcasing our initiatives nationwide, has some extremely informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of the law that are found right here in Oregon, as well as other states. The website is uniteforfreedom.com. That's unite, the number four, freedom, dot com. I encourage you to check out and learn more about our organization. One more time, that's unite, the number four, oregon, dot com. And thank you all for your time today.
Thank you for coming forward. Another two people, Sue Salazar and Teresa Hamilton. Sue, you're up first. Three minutes for both of you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Sue Salazar, and I live in Clackamas County and have been here for my entire life of 64 years. I am also a volunteer and not an official spokesperson with the United Sovereign Americans. What you have heard this morning is a accumulation of thousands of hours of work by our highly-qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams from Oregon and across the country. Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in Oregon, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this was not the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. At this time, government representatives at all levels are not being transparent or responsive to what our citizen audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives in legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which our constitutional republic was established. That right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You, as a part of this group, present today, have a chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and your fellow citizens of Oregon that you value it also by passing this resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. We appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you. Teresa Hamilton, you're next.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Teresa Hamilton, and I've been a resident of Damascus for 40 years and a voter. I am volunteering for True the Vote and United Sovereign Americans for Clackamas County specifically. Recently, I became chair, co-chair, along with Steve Hunter, for the Clackamas County Nonpartisan Election Integrity Committee. I've been studying the Clackamas County voter rolls and have found the following. Over 94,000 out of the 387,000 have not voted as far back as 2017 and could be longer. That's just as far as my history goes. And over 60,000 of those 94,000 are registered as NAV, which I believe is probably because of the automatic registration of motor voter that that's causing that. 53,000 plus out of the 94 are active, which means they're going to receive a ballot. And if they're not voting, like their history, that means we've got 53 ballots out there in recycling bins or who knows where. And over 20,000 people on the Clackamas rolls have moved out of state, and rather than cancel them, they are still on the voter rolls as inactive, except for military, school, and temp jobs. I see no reason why they should still continue to be on the rolls. True the Vote has an app that coordinates the voter rolls and the national change of address, and so they show that there was 3,850 Clackamas voters that had moved out of state and registered to vote in their new residence. We have six volunteers that found them on the apps, and then we had 30 volunteers that went to the elections office and signed 2,500 forms, a challenge in them. And the rest were done by other Clackamas residents. When I started this project, the Secretary of State Information said that these challenges, if you vote out of state or if you register out of state, that you would be canceled. Now it says you can be canceled, and I don't know why that's changed, but interesting. Anyway, that's all.
Are you finished?
Yeah. I had one other little thing.
Go ahead, finish your statement.
Okay. I found that in the Clackamas County rolls that some people had moved out of state in 2023, they were inactive in April of '24, and sometime between then and June 6th of '24, they became active. And so they probably received a ballot, and then in July, they became inactive again, and they were out of state. So I don't know how they became active.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is Stephen Hunter and J.D. Pabick. Stephen Hunter, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this morning. My name is Stephen Hunter. I'm currently a resident of the Clackamas County, Wilsonville area. I am a nondenominational voter, more often called an NAV. I belong to the largest political block in Oregon. I don't subscribe to the orthodoxy of either major party, though I prefer the Republican platform more than the others. I am also co-chair of the Clackamas County Nonpartisan Election Integrity Group. It is the goal of this group to bring accountability and trustworthy results back to Oregon's broken voting system. I have visited with many registered, non-affiliated voters, and the common thread of why they are non-affiliated is because they and I do not believe that our vote counts. Unfortunately, some of these same non-affiliated voters are in the process of leaving the state of Oregon if they are able. Granted, the broken voting system is not the only reason. Former Secretary of State Shamia Fagan ordered a series of blobby cartoon character bits in an attempt to convince Oregon voters that it was fun to vote in Oregon. This was shortly before she was found to be breaking ethics laws on another matter. That certainly wasn't fun, and blobby may be in the unemployment line also. As you have heard presented today, voting is a serious responsibility taken seriously by most citizens, and these citizens of all stripes want to have confidence that their ballot has been counted appropriately and not canceled by another fraudulent ballot. Oregon voter rolls are in an atrocious mess. This is partially due to legislative design, registration of legal and illegal residents being automatically registered, isn't that fun, and admitted recently by the State Department of Motor Vehicles and perhaps county clerks not knowing or not caring that their voter rolls are out of federal compliance. The voter roll debacle has reached such a serious status that it has attracted the attention of the National Organization Judicial Watch, giving you a courtesy copy of the press release, of which has filed a lawsuit in federal court, Northern District of Eugene, claiming Oregon has the highest-known inactive registration rate of any state in the nation. As my time comes to a close, I ask you to review the resolution you have received this morning and move to accept this resolution. Please join us, USA, and Judicial Watch in cleaning the voter rolls and instilling confidence in our vote. Three of you will be reelected or not in just a couple of weeks. Wouldn't it be comforting to know that you have 100% confidence that the vote tally was fair, honest, and above board? As it is now, you will never have that confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, you're right on the time. Up next, J.D. Pabick.
Good morning to the board. Thank you for allowing these public comments. I'm J.D. Pabick. I've lived for over 35 years just outside the city limits of Lake Oswego and unincorporated Clackamas County. And I came here today to listen to the resolution by United Sovereign Americans, USA, a nonprofit, a national nonprofit. I did not intend to give testimony, so it was kind of an impulse decision. I have no notes. I hope you'll forgive me if I ramble on a bit and my comments are a bit disjointed. I'm also a volunteer for USA. I'm interested in data and election integrity. When I filled out my little blue card to talk this morning, there's a line that says "The Issue," and I put down "election integrity." Then there's two little checkboxes. Then there's two little checkboxes, "in favor" or "oppose." Well, I think that goes to show you, election integrity is not a partisan thing. It's nonpartisan, you know, and even NAVs can get in on the action there. But it's really, really important, I think. We're a disjointed country now. We're, we don't have a lot of unity, and I think a lot of that is because of a distrust in social and civil organizations, including the election system, state by state. And when you have that distrust, when people feel like my vote doesn't matter, they feel frustrated and they can get angry. So I am all in support of the resolution and elections that are, where it's easy to vote, it's hard to cheat, and there's transparency. Well, Oregon has one of those three things. It's easy to vote here. I've done some data analysis, and I found some oddities in our state voter registrations. You know, we can find dead people that have voted after their death, you know, and it's, well, now I'm starting to ramble. I'll finish with, I have grandkids, and occasionally they get upset with me because I don't listen. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to the board, and I hope you're listening. I hope you've listened to that resolution, and I hope you vote in support of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. I have two more cards in here, and while I call those people up, if there's anybody else in the room who would like to testify in person today, please come up, fill out a blue card, and put it in the basket so we can call on you. That would be really nice if you could do that. Up next in twos is Jerry Reeves and Paul Powalowski. Come, come, excuse me? Are you Paul?
I'm Paul.
That's Jerry, I'm sorry. And is Paul in here? Come on up, sir. I don't think I pronounced your name correctly.
Powalowski.
Powalowski. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Paul Powalowski, Malala, Oregon.
Please sit down, sir, so the microphone can pick you up.
Paul Powalowski, Malala, Oregon. I'm speaking today, once again, on issues of community safety, particularly with relation to political violence. I'm noticing online harassment campaigns beginning. Now, on you, Madam Chair, for individuals that you know and you've worked with on your campaign. Previously, the same individual who attacked me from behind hospitalized me and left me with a brain injury has gone after Commissioner West's family. These people are not peoples. This is an organization. This is a protected organization. Yesterday, in Clackamas County Court, DDA Ben Klassen, when I asked what agency the county is going to such extents to protect the identity of that he, that has influence over our county, DDA Ben Klassen could only smile and say, "I don't know." This is a situation where everybody knows what's going on. They know you know. Do they know that you know what's going on? Yet it still goes on. What I found, found is extremely disturbing yesterday when I went to the VA after the attack. The whole world knew I was going to be to the VA. Very, very awkward situation happened during that visit with concussion symptoms, everything being omitted from my files. Three men with guns were outside my door. I spoke yesterday, have it on film, to VA Federal Police, and they say that it was not the federal police. This situation definitely happened. VA Federal Police has no record of it. They do not use private security at the Portland VA. So pretty much here to state, understand that the organizations that are starting to attack Clackamas County politicians online, they're organized. These are not normal people. They're extremely dangerous, very violent. I thank the Commission for some information it gave me on being able to look toward legal aid. But yes, just heretofore state, this is actually happening. This is political violence that is strong enough that it's making the county system protect it while it attacks the county. And that is all.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Up next, I have two cards. Would you please come up in pairs? Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. Bob, you're up first.
Good morning. My name is Bob Terry, resident of Washington County, the state of Oregon. And Madam Commissioner and all the other Commissioners, I want to congratulate you on the friendliness that you show to your constituents, something we're not used to so much on the other side of the river. And I hope that all of you get reelected. So it'd be very nice to see your faces up there and continue, including you, Mr. Savis, who is not up for election right now, or been. So what I'd like to say to you is just make you aware of the fact that we also in Washington County, I'm part of the integrity team over there, we're very strong and happy to see them showing their faces here and supporting you. But this is a very, very serious situation. And in this county, you may not be aware of it, I was hoping it came out this morning, but it really encouraged me to come up and say a few words, is the fact that as of yesterday, there is a state, a lawsuit, a pro se lawsuit, I hope you all know what pro se means, a pro se lawsuit that has been filed against this county and the state of Oregon that reached the United States Supreme Court and was docketed yesterday. It was returned to the, previously turned to the appellate court for review of some of the issues in the lawsuit. It was returned yesterday from appellate court and accepted by the Supreme Court and docketed against this county and against the state of Oregon. So I wanted to make you aware of that. I was hoping it had maybe had come out earlier. I have sat in your, in your observation room and worked a lot in this county. I love this county just as much as I love my county, and I really hope you do well. But we must do something about our election system and the fraud. And it isn't, I'm not saying anybody intentionally is doing the fraud. Somebody is, but the number of ballots that come through, they're not real ballots, and the way that they're being reviewed and looked at is really a serious problem. And we encourage you to go back to a system without using the computers and doing it by precinct, where you can get certified the very same day. If nobody has demonstrated it to you, we'd be happy to work with your integrity team here or your board or your designees to show you how well that system works. We actually tried it in a vote in Washington County with the county board of elections permission, and we came up within four differences in the ballot, but our system was done within a matter of four hours for the entire vote, where it took days for the elections office to do it. So there is a way of doing it, and we had hoped to show you how. Thank you all very much, and I wish you well in your elections.
Thank you. Jace, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Jace Neely. I've lived in Clackamas County in Milwaukee for over 10 years. I'm here because I've recently have gone through two cases of, I'm not sure it's fraud, but we received this voter notification card recently, and this person has not lived at my address, never, that I know of. And I recently received my three ballots for the three people who live there, but not this person's. And this person, voter, he effective date was 9/13/2024, is when he changed his political party, or did something or signed up. So this person's not, who knows? I don't even know where their ballot is, or I don't know anything about that. And then in the past, I was also, in 2022, I switched political parties, and I received an extra ballot in the mail. So I have two. I still have that ballot. So that's, I'm not sure, but like one week prior to that deadline, I changed from my political parties, and then I received two. So I did not use it. I have it, but I used the one that I've changed to. So anyway, I just want to say there are problems with our system, and receiving another problem with our system this year, so just want to be informed that I have proof. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to testify during public communication?
Oh.
Come on, oh, you already did. So please make it brief, because this is your second appearance.
So I just, Dorothy Von Eggers, I live in Clackamas County. So just recently, my son had moved to Wyoming a year ago, and just last two, but he didn't do a change of address because I'm, it's, I still get his permanent mail. Just last Tuesday, he signed up to vote, to register to vote in Wyoming, and he voted on Tuesday, but I got his ballot a couple of weeks ago. And so I shredded it right away, because that's what you do, because he's not voting in the state of Oregon, he's voting in Wyoming. But I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, there's got to be some, some way where, because, you know, this ballot could have gotten out of hand and accidentally voted, and so he would have voted twice. So maybe there's some way that the, when the DMV in some states sign people up, they can notify the previous state that this person is now a resident, and you need to take them off the voter rolls.
Thank you very much. Well, your son gets to vote for president twice.
No, because I shredded it.
Okay, look, folks, we have, please, Andrew, do we have anyone online who wishes to testify today?
Madam Chair, we have one person who's preregistered to speak today. We also have one, I'm sorry, two hands raised in the Zoom room as well who did not register.
Please go ahead with those people.
We'll now begin with the online testimony. If you have registered to speak at this meeting, I'll begin with you. I have one person, Mr. David Codwalter. You have registered, and I'll start with you, and then I'll move to other hands I see that did not preregister to speak. Mr. Codwalter, I'll ask you to now unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is David Codwalter, resident of Clackamas County in the city of Milwaukee. This is my fourth time speaking with you, with the goal of seeking a speedy resolution to the stalemate between the city of Milwaukee and the county commissioners, so that we may finish construction of Milwaukee Bay Park. Last month, as you may have seen on the news, over 50 people rallied at Milwaukee Bay Park to urge the city and the county to work together for our future. Many of the folks that I spoke to are from unincorporated Clackamas County, and the ask was simple, for the city and county to put their differences aside, come to the table with the shared goal of unstallring this park's construction. The county commissioners have cited one particular issue as the main reason for why construction is on hold, and I would like to request additional clarity on this particular issue, so that we might hopefully find a resolution. The county commissioners have stated in emails that the district continues to need assurances that investments will not be stranded at the expense of the remaining taxpayers should Milwaukee withdraw from the district. Now, the term "stranded asset" has been repeatedly used in verbal email communications, and words matter, so I wanted to get familiar with this term, as I imagine many ordinary citizens may not be familiar with it. I understand that this term usually refers to an investment that has become obsolete or nonperforming due to changes in the market or regulatory environment, leading to unexpected breakdowns or devaluations. One example could be a coal power plant rendered obsolete by cleaner energy policies. Another example could be a large shopping mall suffering the loss of business due to shifts towards online shopping. In the context of Milwaukee Bay Park, I'm having trouble making this argument fit. The park is a tangible asset that will serve the public regardless of which entity has jurisdiction over it in the future. Parks are not subject to obsolescence in the way that technologies or market-dependent assets are. As Commissioner Schrader aptly stated in a recent meeting, quote, "A park is a park is a park. There are no artificial boundaries here. Everybody in the area, no matter where you are, unincorporated or in the city, you're all using the same parks." So investing in Milwaukee Bay Park using money that's already budgeted, supplemented by $2.4 million in grants, enhances the value and quality of life for all residents in the district. It's difficult for me to imagine how it could become a stranded asset because its utility and community value remain constant irrespective of administrative boundaries or governments. If the district has concerns over wanting to maintain ownership of tangible properties such as benches, playground equipment, et cetera, those terms can all be negotiated in good faith with the city, which the city has repeatedly stated is willing to do. So my question is very specific to you, and I would appreciate if you could address it directly. Could you please expand on what you mean by, quote, "stranded asset" in this case, and go into more detail about your concerns of specifically which negative outcomes you would imagine would occur, quote, "at the expense of district taxpayers, should Milwaukee choose to leave the district in the future?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrew, who's up next?
I'll now have you raise your hand if you wish to speak. I currently see one hand raised. Donnie Hedlund, apologies if that's a mispronunciation. I'll now unmute you and allow you to talk. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Commissioner, my name's Don Hedlund. I live in Clackamas County, and I'm a resident of Oregon. I'm a citizen of the United States of America, and I have a civil right to vote, and I have a civil right to have my vote counted, living in this county and in the state of Oregon. I do not trust the voting system that we currently have in the state of Oregon and in the county of Clackamas. The population in our state, in the 10 largest counties, went from 9% to 10% from 2010 through 2020. Your voter registrations followed that. It has not risen very much at all in those 10 counties since 2020 to 2024. Now, you need to look at where are all of the registrations coming from? That's very important for you to understand. And another thing that we need to think about is you have a group of frustrated citizens sitting in front of you. They are citizens of the United States of America, but they are residents of Oregon. That means they have a civil right to have their vote counted, and they have a civil right that the state and the county make sure that your vote counts. I have been looking at the data since I got involved with Stan Satter since 2021 on this state and in this country, and I do not trust the voter registrations in Oregon. I do not trust this system. Now, as Don Powers knows and others, that software can be manipulated. You have a Hart and a Civic voting machines in your county. You have a Verity voting system that is the software system that is managed by Microsoft. You are never allowed to open up any of your machines, or you can get a $50,000 fine by Hart and a Civic. Next year, you will be looking at, should we get new machines down here at the county level, or should we renew our contract with Hart and a Civic? Why does a voting company, machine company, fine you for looking at your own logs and machines? You need to look at that. That's a very important thing to look at. I was one of the, I was able to get the cast vote records from your county, was the only one to be able to do it in a very long time, in 2022, and they were looked at by Don Powers and his team. What they discovered is we have a really a lot amount of ballots coming into our county. So here's what I want you to think about. Are we voting? Are we counting votes? Or are we counting ballots? Because any registration that you have that's active.
Please finish, Donnie.
Ballot.
Please finish up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. Don Powers, you wanted to say something you have, can you do it in 30 seconds?
Maybe.
I'll pose the challenge to you. Now, as he comes up, is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify who has not had an opportunity to do so? Don, go ahead.
Thank you. Challenge accepted. What we're looking at here, what we're hearing is...
is whether you personally believe that there's problems in our election system is somewhat irrelevant because what you're hearing is the people of this state, the people of the United States don't have confidence. And it's your obligation to give us confidence in government. And that includes our election systems. Somebody was talking here about, is there some system when my son's registered in one state and then he votes here? There is a system in place, but that system is called ERIC and it's being, it's being, it's being eliminated in several states in the country because of lots of problems with ERIC, lots of problems, corruption and other issues with ERIC really bad. It's not effective. We add that to all of the other things we're talking about. I right now am dealing with, I've got probably at least a dozen, if not more, people that have contacted me showing me pictures of duplicate ballots that they have coming to them. They've got, and it's interesting. One of them, just as an example, there's certain color blue on it. Obviously not from Clackamas County because ours are green, right? But it's blue. And then the color blue on the other one is a little bit off, like much lighter. And one of them has a physical stamp on it and the other one has a stamp as if it's gone through the mail system, right, through the bulk mail. One of them has some numbers on the bottom of it. The other one does not. I've asked them not to open them up, to take pictures of them front and back, not opened, then open them up, front and back, you know, do all of that and scan it all. And then they're going to get it to me. But I'm dealing with that every single day. I'm getting calls like this. And there's something wrong that's causing us to not have faith. It's reasonable that we ask for these things. We're not claiming necessarily fraud even. We're just saying, we don't have confidence in the system. We need to have confidence. And there's some very simple measures to be put in place that are extremely reasonable that we should be able to expect our government to do. Simple things that are, that are normal within a business. I've run three businesses. I own three now and I've run three in the past. These are not things that are unusual in the business world. We should run our, if anything in our country needs to be audited and checked and double-checked and secured, it's our election systems. And I'm sorry, one last thing. As a software person, I've run several software companies. Whenever we've gone contracted with a larger university, for example, or a large entity, one of the things that's required is we put our software in escrow so that should our company fail, should we go out of business or run into some other issue, their system, which is relying on our software, they're not being held hostage by the fact that they can no longer conduct business or make changes or deal with what's necessary for them to run their company just because we've failed as a company. But that's not even a requirement at all within our election system. That's normal standard procedure in the software world. And we don't even do that with our election systems. We're held hostage by these companies. It's absurd. So do us the right thing. Okay? Help us get secure confidence in our election system. Thank you. And thank you for indulging.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to open it up to your comments in a moment. However, I would like our county counsel, Jane Veto, to explain something. And then I'll have Gary Schmidt also explain something. Jane, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. During these presentations, I did hear a request for an adoption of a resolution today. I would point out to the board that the, our public meetings law under ORS 192 does require that board action items be properly noticed. And this has not been noticed. Additionally, the county procedure for adoption of a resolution would involve this being reviewed by county staff and then also being brought to the board on at least two occasions prior to adoption. So my recommendation today would be to table that request until a later time.
Thank you. Gary Schmidt?
The council just said it, but to add, we usually start at issues on Tuesdays where a commissioner brings an item forward for the rest of your colleagues to agree or not if you want to pursue it. And if you do, you have a policy session next, as Jane mentioned, where staff reviews it and puts it on the proper documentation and it's noticed. And then finally, it comes back to a business meeting for your formal adoption. That's the course of business you have used up to this point.
Yeah, I've nicknamed that the regular course of business. So it's very consistent to anybody in the county on how we do things. I hope commissioners have some comments. I found your testimony on your resolution riveting, to say the least. Just for your information, in Clackamas County, there are now 319,000 registered voters. 319,000 registered voters with a population of about 423,000. In the last four years, the population in Clackamas County has increased by almost 25%. And I think you can guess where they came from. Okay? Just put that in your nugget. For about every example that you brought forward, I have either experienced that in my personal life or with friends I know. A couple of weeks ago, our county clerk, Catherine McMullin, came forward and she was telling us about how her office is prepared to do whatever's necessary to ensure a very fair election. And you can go back a couple of weeks ago and you can view that online if you would like. And my response was to her, okay, let's say you do everything perfectly. It may not be you. It may be outside influences. I'm going to name Department of Voter Vehicles for one. We know there was a huge data breach nine months ago, about that, nine months ago, whatever. There are some bugs in that. One of my very good friends on the last, this last primary election did not get her ballot. And she's been in Oregon for four years. So she went down to the clerk's offices and gave my ballot. She says, well, we mailed it to you. Well, she says, here's my ID, citizen, has a driver's license in Oregon. Showed him the ID. And the person behind the counter looked at him and says, well, no, your ID is here. We shipped it to some other place. And she says, I don't live there. I don't live there. So I accompanied her down to the DMV in Woodburn. And it took us a while to get through. And so we presented our case to the person at the window, mm, I can't handle this. And so they put us up to the highest level. And a person came out and says, well, you know, you're right. That ballot did not get delivered to your address. And yes, there is a problem. And I says, what's the problem? And I grilled her. She would not answer any of my questions. So it came time to renew her vehicle registration. She never got her tags in the mail. So we thought we had to fix it at DMA. She did not get her tags in the mail. We don't know where they're at. She had to go back in and physically say, I paid for them when I bought my car. Also, I believe the post office is an issue. As we know, post offices across, especially in eastern Oregon, have closed. We know delivery times are less than they used to be. And I have heard stories where ballots pile up and they're not delivered or after they're filled up, not delivered. Again, I had, one of my best friends worked at the post office for years. She went out of her way to make sure that those posts, before the law changed, those ballots were postmarked. I'm not sure if every postal worker has the same dedication as my friend did. So there are issues. There are issues. I don't disagree with some of the statements in here. I would have to quantify and fact-check many of the statements that were made about numbers because I don't know. I just don't know what the numbers are. Another example, my husband went in to renew his driver's license. I don't know how many years ago that was, three or four years ago. And he got his ballot back or a registration card and they changed his voter registration. There are serious issues. I don't know what to do about it. In Clackamas County, we're a statutory county. We are not a home rule county like Washington County. Our elections clerk, please, sir, lower your hand. Sir, lower your hand. Our elections clerk is an independent elected official. We could pass any resolution, any ordinance, and it would fall on deaf ears because it's up to clerk to make the change. That's how it is in Clackamas County. Okay? So I wish that the clerk was here today to listen to all this. And I'm going to have her, ask her if she would please go online and listen to all your testimony because I do think there is some validity in much of what you said. Now, you've asked that we, or did you ask the 2020 elections were invalid? And this is why I have trouble making a statement that the election was invalid.
2022.
22, excuse me, 22, thank you. Ben West was elected in 2022. Does that mean we invalidate his election, his right to sit at this dais? I don't think so. So be careful what you ask for. You do not get a cherry pick who you don't want to be at. Stop, stop. Don't argue with me. You don't get a cherry pick on which election you think has validity or to be invalid. So that's the type of information that we're presented with. We have a lot of information. I know this is a hot issue going forward. And frankly, you see what we're up against. We are a county of the rule of law. We follow the rules and we try to do the very best we can on this issue. Thank you. We have several other commissioners who would like to speak. Who wants to go first? Mr. Scholl?
Yes, thank you. And good morning, everyone. And thank you for your presentation today. For those of you who did not present, thank you for being here. The expectation of the electorate is that our elections will be accurate in accordance with the law. And that's required for maintaining a functional republic. The people in this room, and based on my travels throughout the county, the people throughout the county share your concern about election integrity. It's a national concern, in fact. As mentioned earlier, a day or two ago, Stephen Johncous and others put forth a pro se lawsuit against the Secretary of State alleging inadequate action to clean up the state voter rolls. And also, recent Secretary of State admission that the motor voter process, which is a statewide process and in fact, a process brought, borne by the federal government, is and has been an error and in need of correction. The extensive work and examination of the election processes in the state and your recommendations for improved action in election integrity today reflect your sincerity, your initiative, hard work, and your sense of patriotism and civic duty in examining through countless hours the effectiveness or lack thereof of elections in the state of Oregon. I would like to mention that there are state laws that we need to deal with when looking at this. We cannot deal with this just from a county perspective. And one of the laws that comes to mind is the 1987 law that made mail-in ballots in Oregon a statewide thing. And that law also restricted counties from doing the old-fashioned voting by precinct. I ask you to work with your state caucus to begin to look at that 1987 law and process for maybe changing that. The, one of the problems that I and you have mentioned today regarding our voter rolls is a very big problem. It never ends. We'll never get to 100% perfect because we always have people moving out of the state, moving out of the county, or moving to a different address in the county. That's why I ask people on a regular basis, if you or somebody in your family has moved, passed away, gone to another state or whatever, please ensure they contact the clerk. That's the fastest way to keep things cleaned up. Also, in order for the state of Oregon and all states in this nation to cast electoral votes for the election of the president, that means that the voting process at the 3,400 counties must be accurate. And all those counties have to roll up their votes to this appropriate Secretary of State and that must be accurate. Otherwise, the Electoral College can't, will not be, cannot be relied on to be accurate. So I appreciate your resolution. I would be happy to make a motion today, but in view of our county council's comments, what I would like to recommend is that this issue be put on our county website for issues on Tuesday morning for discussion at issues. And if we need a policy session, because of the urgency, I see no reason to make a motion, as you've recommended today, after 5 November. It needs to be done before 5 November, not just for Clackamas County, but for Clackamas County to send a signal to the entire state. Wake up, take action, listen to the people from, listen to the people of United sovereign Americans. So we light a, you light a fuse on this problem and let, I hope that we can send up the Red Star Cluster, which is Regimental Gauging Engagement Meeting between combat forces. We can do that and send a signal to the entire state and from the state to the nation that this is time for us to take action. So, so if we can get this on issues on Tuesday, perhaps, and I think we can get a policy session on Wednesday, maybe I can make a motion regarding this on the business meeting next week. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your patriotism and God bless America.
Commissioner West, you're up.
I take two commissioners to move something to issues. I would like to second Commissioner Scholl's effort to move this to issues on Tuesday. Well, it's nice to hear from our bosses today. We work for you. You're the boss. And I don't think government tells you, reminds, acknowledges that enough. So here we are, listening to our bosses. And I'm also not going to be a government official or elected that gaslights you and says you're crazy or says you're wrong or, nothing to see here. As you can see with your own eyes that the emperor has no clothes and that there's something amiss. And there are fair questions and skepticism that is valid. And it's your right to bring those concerns before us. Across party lines, we have seen an acquit, perplexing questions come before us about what's going on. I think we just recently had another canary in the coal mine moment in Oregon. And that might be pointing to a larger problem. And it was, I believe in 2021 or, I don't know when they passed motor voter, but the Democrats passed motor voter in Oregon. And motor voter was a very broad sweeping to pull as many people as possible onto the voter rolls and to give them access to vote. A lot of objection to that policy was put forward, but they charted along and moved forward and passed motor voter. And then we have learned that Oregon and its bureaucracies is failing at another effort in making sure that our voter rolls are clean, transparent, and trustworthy. And we saw in two separate instances, 1,500 voters who were not legally documented residents on the voter rolls. And now the governor has put a pause to that policy. But we're supposed to look to the exact same people that created the policies that exasperated this problem to supposedly have the solution to fix it again. That seems a little foolhardy and wrong-headed, in my opinion. I didn't know if I was going to tell this story or if I should share it, but I'm going to. Administrator Gary Schmidt and I just had a meeting with Catherine Clerk in her office. And the goal of the meeting was to say, we are very concerned that the voter rolls in Clackamas County aren't trustworthy and that there's some problems with them. And we came with some very, well, I would think would be reasonable opportunities to do better with our voter rolls, with the whole goal of having the most trustworthy voter rolls in the state of Oregon and voter rolls in the state of Oregon and to be an example about what good policy was. Very nonpartisan approach. And we brought examples about where there were inaccuracies. And the conversation was tense. We didn't totally find agreement, tried to be very respectful in that meeting and build some trust, and so hopefully we can still do so. But the big ask was, we would like a forensic audit, a deep dive, a second check in a way that has not been done elsewhere from a third-party entity that the voters can trust to make sure that our voter rolls are accurate. We didn't get much traction with that request, and she proceeded to tell us all the things she is doing. And we tried to even find solutions that maybe could help her, like, how can we do better with death certificates at a county level to make those more transparent, to where a grieving family member does not have to show up to the county with a death certificate of somebody that died and take that extra step to go into some government office? Can we make that electronic where it can be checked against a roll from the county records? Is there anything we could be more innovative? Can we use technology in a way that allows us to be more transparent and accurate? We talked about how to check the voter rolls of people who moved against the change of address from the post office. Teresa Hamilton, I know, I don't know if you're still in the room, but you gave a fantastic testimony of this. We asked the same questions of our clerk. She says she does some of this. We didn't get a lot of specifics and does a lot of other things. But regardless, doing a deep dive, at least right before every presidential election or right after, as you have, like, new voter rolls, or something that really shows that we're consistently working hard to make our voter rolls the best they can be, is completely So out of those 1,500 people that were found by the state of Oregon, that should not have been on our voter rolls, and I wouldn't be surprised if there's a lot more chair and I mean, I'm sorry for not being more included on this. I now know what an attestation state is. Gary and I were sitting in the meeting, and some of those people that were found by, through motor voter, to not be valid documented voters are, check the attestation box and are now voting in Clackamas County. And I said to the clerk, I said, so is it an honor system that you can just say you're a legal citizen, and then, how is that verified? Do we just, you just check a box? And she says, no, we, it's not an honor system, and because it has the penalty of perjury, it's an attestation. And I said, but where's the accountability? Do I have to prove the negative? And she goes, well, you know, that's the system. If they check this box, they're a valid voter now. So technically, every fif, all those voters, there were 1,500 of them, they found through motor voter, if they check a box, they're voting in our elections. They could. I mean, that's, that's the law, right? Am I, I mean, to see it head and ons, am I, I mean, this isn't my expertise. I don't, I may not be the smartest guy in the room, but that's how I read it. And, you know, we, we can't have a large segment of our population just not trusting how this works. It's just, we can't. And so we have to do better to bring confidence back into our election process. And I don't know, I don't know if, how to maybe totally get there. I'm learning, and, and, and my boss is out there teaching me how to know this a little bit better, how to understand it. But I am, I am concerned, and I do think that whatever effort this board can take to set a standard and resonate your voice that is valid, and I think would be a good effort. And I don't know exactly what resolution will look like when we get done speaking with you all and, and talking to legal and figuring out where we, would be best for this county to go. But I, I do want to be an elected official that's responsive to your concerns, and I'll do my best to do that.
Thank you all for coming today. It was really enlightening to hear from you. And I had an experience with an election where I lost it by half a percentage point. And evidently, someone was in the elections office. This is not with our current clerk. This was with our previous clerk, where someone was taking ballots that were under votes and changing the votes. And I will never know if I lost that election of half a percentage point, if it was because of who they were changing the votes for. It was for a particular party, which I won't mention. And I thought, well, I can either make a big deal out of this, or I just decided to gracefully say, well, that's just the way the cookie crumbles. And this was a local person who was volunteering in the office. But that's, hey, that's over. And, you know, I just felt that I needed to move ahead, get over it. And frankly, I prefer being a county commissioner because it's closer to the people. And I'm really grateful that you folks came here, here, here today with your concerns. But I also want to let you know that one of the positive things, we're hearing about some of the negative issues and things that need to be fixed, but one of the positive things is that in this entire country, our voting system is decentralized. And what that means is, it's not easy to break into it with cybersecurity attacks, because each county, because races around the county, counties are all run differently. So people that want to do that, it's, because it's so decentralized, it makes it very difficult to do. Okay? And I know that because I just was briefed by the FBI the other day, and they told me that. The other thing is, I'm going to tell you, is that I hope that many of you that are concerned about this, you know, you can sign up as citizens, which is a responsibility, to work at the elections office, to actually be a direct part of the counting, the direct part of watching that things are done well. And I would suggest, as citizens, that that might be something you consider, because that means at the local level, because you're all friends, and you're all neighbors, and you're all folks that know each other, you trust each other to do the right thing and follow the correct process when you're in the elections office. So I would strongly suggest, those of you that are really interested in that, should really consider becoming the folks that actually are in the system, counting the votes, watching what's going on, so you get a firsthand experience of how they're managing it on the ground in our counties, and actually, in particular, in Clackamas County. That would be a positive citizenship responsibility that you might want to consider.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, appreciate everyone being here today. Nothing more important, as an American, is our right to vote. So that's fundamental. I think that's why we're all here, regardless of our ideology or political beliefs or backgrounds. I do want to say a couple of things here, but in particular, with regard to whatever comes before us on Tuesday, I'm hoping staff can, and I think Counselor Veto indicated as such, that they would do the background work on, on this resolution. Particularly, the thing that jumped out of me right away was page two with regard to the open source audit and some striking numbers there. I'd like to read that, like I read anything, whether it comes from ODOT or comes from DMV. I, I read everything, and I try to validate as best I can with the resources I have to make sure that whatever, whatever we're approving or I'm voting at a table in a transportation meeting, that there's validity to whatever those documents are. And a number of us, during, some of you all in the room who were involved in the tolling ODOT discussions, realize that we either, the information we receive was not accurately portrayed or understood. I won't get into finger pointing, but, but we always have to do our homework and make sure that what we have before us and we vote on is correct. And that's, that's my job. I read a lot. And frankly, that's what y'all hire me to do, and that's what I do. That said, I do want to go back on, I was looking this up here, one second here. And I think you'll find this interesting. So I'm just going to read a thing here, and I'll, I think the website is national, well, I'll get it. But basically, I just kind of look up the history of mailing, mail-in voting, and it dates actually back to the Civil War. And mail-in ballots were authorized in some states during the Civil War. And so during that time, it grew. And anyone, our overseas ballots or military ballots have been in place for a long time, giving those most important people who are protecting our country a right to vote. I think that's really fundamental to everything. So there is history to this, you know? And I think that a point was made here today that stuck out to me. I forgot the lady's name who came up here and testified about that. Certainly, it, when you, when you get a driver's license, or you move to Oregon, if you get a driver's license, right? If you go to DMV and you get a driver's license, you're automatically registered to vote. We know that. That's what's been discussed here today. However, when you leave Oregon and you don't either register in another state, or you retain your Oregon driver's license, where your ballot goes, and/or if you do, how long it takes for those department motor vehicles of those two states to reconcile that, to make sure your votes count. So, you know, let's just face, I mean, I realize that the system is not perfect, nor is the U.S. Postal Service not perfect. I received a piece of mail three weeks ago, related my 2022 election. That was mailed in October of 2022. And I got it three weeks ago. I went to the counter, and I said, I'd like to understand how this happened. Is there anything you can do to track it? Because the postal service is, you know, getting more advanced all the time. They're claiming that every piece of mail you get, if it, if it doesn't get delivered, it's going to come back. And, and they talk at the counter with certainty that you're going to get that piece of mail back. Well, I didn't mail this. I was the recipient. But nonetheless, he didn't, he didn't get it back. I got it two years, almost two years late. Now, no explanation at the counter, but it, you know, being a business owner, being a resident, you know, I'm 60-some-odd years old, you know, I mailed a lot of stuff, and I received a lot of stuff in the mail. And things have not been consistent. For the most part, it works. Let's face it. Most of our mail works. We get most of our mail, you know, it, our work. But we know it's not perfect. And I think anyone who wants to state or claim that everything's perfect, maybe doesn't have the experiences that some of us have had. But I just want to say, I will, I'll do the homework on this, and I, I appreciate your comments. And with that, I'll yield back to the chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, I just want to mention that, looking around the room today, I, I see that at least half the people, a little bit more than half the people in this room today, are election volunteers and/or scheduled election observers. I know.
That's what I was alluding to.
Yeah, these, these are the most, probably the most seen people in the Clackamas County Elections Office observing and helping out. So again, I want to thank you for your devotion to duty and your time.
West?
I also want to encourage you, and I want to make sure I say this, because I don't think any of you here would participate in this behavior, but your clerk is elected. She also works for you. And I know you probably have reached out to her, but continue to do so. Please do so respectfully and encourage others to do so. But you can be firm, and you can have a solid, you know, and make a solid argument. And, and, you know, we want to work with, with y'all too, to, to have those conversations with her, and maybe there's something we could do on a local level that has some best practices. And so, you know, she, I wish she was here, but she's not, and we'll still try to have those conversations with her as a county, but, you know, I share your concerns.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I'll be talking to Catherine this afternoon, actually, as part of what I'm doing. But thank you, Mark, for pointing out that we have people here actively participating locally, because that's the strength. You know, everything else that, you know, needs to be tweaked and looked at and made sure that it's accurate, but you folks are the most important in terms of having that system where you can be there and check and watch and make sure that everything is done in a way that's fair and just in this county.
Thank you. In closing, I too need to read this. I'm very much factual person. I'm very much a numbers person, and I take deep dives into the budgets, and there are many numbers floated around in this document. I don't know where they came from or what the attribution is, because I haven't read the document. And I think you would recognize that as fair. Okay? I am going to take some time with this, work with county council and the rest of the commissioners to see what we can come up with. Moving forward, I have signed a letter with the other jurisdictions in northern Oregon calling for peaceful elections, because there is a threat to the north of us. In Clackamas County, we are a peaceful county. We are a law and order county. And I'm very happy to say that everybody in this room, I'm certain, observes those precincts as well. Yep, going forward, we'll get this done. We'll see what type of effect it has. Resolutions, just so you know, are not a law. They're not an ordinance, and sometimes are hard to enforce. Doesn't mean we're not going to try. So seeing this issue is probably ended. Gary, what's up next?
Next is administrator update I'll pass because of the time. Last item is Commissioner Communications.
Commissioners, it's now Commissioner Communication, and according to my list, Commissioner West, you're up first.
I've said a lot, so I had, it's been, it's been a busy week. One of the things I did recently was I had the opportunity to work with our service provider loved one at BRACs here in Oregon City. They do a phenomenal outreach that helps reach people that are homeless and those that have other issues and struggles in their lives, get the community support that they need. And there was a lot of people there. I want to thank BRAC's Laundry Service, who has three locations in Clackamas County. It's a small business, and they have these beautiful laundromats, and they open up their laundromat with service providers, with faith leaders, with business leaders, with, with the whole community, right? It's not, it's not the government solving this problem. They're engaging this population. Then we know who they are, then we can begin to get them on a pathway to recovery and whatever their needs are, and not allow them to languish in this kind of despair and, and not have the supports they need. It's a great outreach. And we need business leaders like BRACs to continue to step up. I'm just was in awe of their, their love for Clackamas County and how they have worked with loved one and Father's Heart to really make a difference. It was a lot of fun and a really varied group. And so I, I, I'm really proud of the work we're doing in this recovery space. I'm asking some tough questions right now around harm reduction, its use in Clackamas County, and its effectiveness, and some of the more radical pieces of harm reduction, and understanding not just our county, but how it's implemented throughout the state. And if we need to have some reasonable policy positions that, that challenge those common assertions, then, then we're looking to do that. But I'm really proud of the work we're doing in the recovery space, and I wanted to give an update with that.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Scholl, you're next.
Okay, we've said a lot today, but a couple of quick things. On 22 November will be the dedication to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial that's being built on the Capitol grounds in Salem. I'd like to thank Steve Bates and his team for all the work they're doing on that memorial that will, this is about giving our veterans a place of rest and for all of us a place to heal, for the 790 Oregonians who lost their lives in the Vietnam War, and for the many, many, many thousands who served there between 1955 and 1975. For all of you in Clackamas County, I'm not talking to you now, but people watching us on, on the internet, pick up your voter pamphlets. You got two of them, one from the state, one from the county. Read them, take your ballot, fill it out. Don't wait. I recommend that you go to the Clackamas County Clerk's website, where she has listed all of the locations of the ballot drop box in Clackamas County. If you use those, they're picked up late in the evening, every day. They go directly from there, directly inside the clerk's office. There's a minimum of handling, as opposed to, of putting it in the U.S. mail. So please do that, and we want to make sure that everybody votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, just, I'll be brief. Just give you a report of what took place on Tuesday. Almost every day's a transportation meeting, but Tuesday, we're in Kaiser, Oregon. The Oregon Department of Transportation has been doing almost a quarterly meeting of of the area commissioned on transportation, every area of the state, there's like eight of them, nine of them, has an area commission on transportation. So there's a chair and vice chair, along with what's called the modal chairs, which is freight, rail, air, bike, ped, all of that, meet and speak to members of the OTC and ODOT, and we get updates and give input. It occurs to me often, once again, it's not the first time, that ODOT is a department of the state, and there's no, there's no confusion to a lot of us who have elected roles, who have to make the best of what we got, which comes down seeing from the state, make it work, right? And we have land use laws that are really impacting our, our transportation systems. We've been talking about the commute shed, we've been talking about people that are, that are working or lived in Clackamas County or the metro region, who have now found that if they want to buy a home and raise a family, it's too expensive in this region to do that. So they're, they're moving farther and farther out, but they're commuting back in every day. And we're not factoring that into our land use, we're not factoring that into our transportation systems and all those things. And so that was the point that I was trying to raise, and a lot of the members, especially the elected ones that were there, whether they're mayors or city councillors or county commissioners, that are members of these acts, you know, their heads nodding up and down, and so that, I won't say a chorus, but it was certainly a lot of people echoing those, those concerns. And what, so I asked the question, how is ODOT, to ODOT staff, how are you going to work with that? I mean, how do we, how we integrate all these moving pieces, along with the climate initiative from the state to reduce, reduce carbon, right? If you know that this is happening, that's counterproductive to state goals, so how is the state and how is ODOT engaged in that? And I, I didn't get a clear answer, and it, it, I'm not being critical of ODOT or the state here, but I would say that it just goes to show that there are so many things going on, there's not enough thought into how our state is structured and how we streamline a lot of these statewide goals and processes. So I, I won't belabor that, but all to say, just a reminder that, that when you are in this local, though we don't have a lot of power, we do not have a lot of powers, county commissioners or city councils, we are given the ingredients to try and make everything work, and it's like trying to make a cake without eggs, right? Sometimes you can't, you can't, it doesn't work. And I, I, I think that we're realizing that. Sometimes we call them unfunded mandates. Commissioner Smith and I have always talked about that, and, and Schrader as well. We are, been, for years, we get piecemeal funding to do something, but maybe not enough. We can't complete the work and do it well, because we don't get enough funding. Mental health issues, drug, drug issues, civil commitment, a number of things, we're always trying to, to fix it. And we have to put it all together. Counties more than cities, but we have to put it all together. We, we end up realizing that the whole system is before us, and yet our, our key decision-makers, our state legislators, don't, if they don't have that experience in their past, I think they're going to have a hard time understanding what we all deal with. And again, I'm hoping that we can rise that to the level of communicating to our state legislators that we are the people that have to do the work, and yet, we don't have a strong enough voice in the state.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I want to mention that Chair Smith and I attended the Oregon City Courthouse Committee meeting yesterday. Well, good, well, no, but I won't say too much.
I want your perspective on it.
Well, it's, it's going reasonably well. What we're doing is pulling together a group of folks to discuss what's going to happen to the downtown courthouse in Oregon City, because it's a, it's a building that people want back on the tax rolls, right? They not only want it back on the tax rolls, they want to decide, you know, how do we potentially, maybe, how do you renovate or rehab it? Or if you really make the, you know, take the building down, how you can reincorporate some of the elements of that great old historic building. Oregon City really wants to have that to be a really vital part of their downtown core, so their businesses survive, people go down and visit, use the restaurants and shop there. And so we're working on that. We should have a final recommendation from this advisory committee on the 21st, and it includes the mayor of Oregon City, their Economic Development Director, and other leaders in the community from the education system as well. And it's, it's a good committee to be on. The other thing I did yesterday is I went to Oregon Businesses and Industries Vision Oregon event, because our own Lori Olend, who is the president of Miles Fiberglass, is the chair of that statewide committee. And what they do is look at various businesses that have been innovative and excelled in what they do to get people jobs and employment, and they actually give them kudos and an award. I got to sit at the stander table with my good friend, Justin Delaney. They're one of the biggest employers in the region here, so it was a great idea. And the other thing that's happening today is, for those of you that are interested in trade and travel, there's going to be a celebration, because KLM is going to be actually offering flights directly from the port of Portland, from our airport to Amsterdam. And that's a real interesting showing that, that Oregon is really becoming kind of a hub for international travel, international business, and that's a positive thing for all of us in the area too. So, and I'm also working on what we call a prosperity initiative, and I'm going to be visiting with the Cambie Center down in Cambie about that, because they run a faith-based program that is helping people, that provides education, financial literacy, help with food, clothing, housing, English as a second language. And those are all the pillars that we need to work with people so they can move up the economic ladder, be able to get jobs, buy a home, and be prosperous in our county.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. I'll be brief. To put some context into the courthouse.
Yeah, thank you.
Constitutionally, in Oregon, counties are charged with providing courthouses. And we were able to build the one next door with a 50% max from the state of Oregon. The legislature and Oregon Judiciary Department realized counties weren't building courthouses because they were too expensive. And I mentioned the growth rate in Clackamas County. That courthouse was built when our population was 50,000, from one judge. Now we have a population of about 423,000. We have 11 judges down there now, is that something like that? Anyway, so we're building. So we own, technically, Clackamas County owns the courthouse in downtown. We want to see economic development, we want to see vitality, so this board decided to assemble a group of citizens in Oregon City, mainly the business community, who are affected by it most in the downtown core area, and there's different organizations whom we picked from, who are coming together. Last night, we had our second meeting, next week, we'll have our third meeting, and this group is tasked with recommending, it's just a recommendation to this board, on what to do with the disposition of the old courthouse. So that's what that's all about. It's really interesting. We have a facilitator who's, you know, pretty neutral, to listen to all the opinions, and it's been very good. Commissioners, we have at 1:00 some important appointments. I'm not sure exactly who's up first, but seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.